All right, it is 7:31. Okay, we'll get started. So I'm going to call the meeting to order. As Scott mentioned, the meeting is being recorded and will be posted to YouTube in the days following the meeting. So before we get started, I also want to announce that there was two executive sessions, one held on February 3rd to discuss police discipline action, and one held on February 8th to discuss potential pending litigation. With that, we'll move to the agenda. Our first item is the approval of the meeting minutes from the meetings on January 11th and January 26th. We'll start with the 11th.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of January 11th, 2021.
All right, I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. And the 26th?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of January 26th, 2021.
All right, I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
I'm at the spur of discussion. Is there any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Racing through it, sorry. So move to the reports. Chief Alexander for the police.
Good evening. For the month of January 2020, the Euclid Township Police Department officers documented 913 entries in the police department call reporting system. During the reporting period, the officers issued 130 traffic citations. They investigated 13 motor vehicle crashes and they arrested 11 individuals. Additionally, for the month of January, the department members conducted one motor carrier detail at the weigh station, resulting in 67 commercial motor vehicles being weighed, none of which were found to be overweight. One inspection was also performed and no violations were reported. During the reporting period, the traffic officers conducted 11 additional inspections during their normal workday, resulting in numerous violations to include one driver being placed out of service for a license issue and one truck being placed out of service for an overweight violation. And that's the report for the month.
Thank you. There any questions? If not, we'll move to the Treasury report.
I wanted to let you know that for the year of 2020, we did end up the year with a little bit over $217,000 surplus and would like to transfer 75,000 of that to our insurance trust fund and 125 to our capital improvement for future capital purchases.
Can I get the motion to approve the transfer?
I'll make a motion to approve the transfer.
I second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. And then for January and the general fund, we've collected just under 5% of our budgeted revenues and have spent almost 7% of our budgeted expenditures.
Thank you.
Move to the Public Works. So for the month of January, the Public Works Department performed pothole repairs on Norwood Road, North Whitford Road, South Village Avenue, and Lightfoot Drive. We did have our first round of Christmas tree pickup on the 6th. I did want to note that we did reschedule the February 3rd Christmas tree pickup tentatively to this Wednesday, February 10th. It does look like we're going to have to reschedule that again due to the amount of snow that we've received just in verifying some of the Christmas trees are actually under several inches, if not feet of snow at this point. So we'd like to give it a little time to melt off. That said, I'm very aware that the forecast for this week has additional snowfall in it. So what I would ask is if residents could check the website and social media, we will try to get that up as soon as possible as when we're going to move forward with that. And also, Christmas trees can be placed out as the bulk item for the week with Eagle disposal. That said, the trend of snow continues. The department was out to salt township roadways on January 3rd and January 31st. We also plowed on the 31st winter storm event, and then obviously this past snowstorm, our crews were out salting and plowing. The department did post snowstorms, have to wash and treat the trucks as well as perform winter equipment maintenance and repair any damages from our snowplow operations. We were also out repairing any damage to lawns and mailboxes damaged by the snowplow operations. And then also, the sewer department performed their daily station checks, responded to PA one calls and markouts, and then performed weekly meter checks as well as right away maintenance.
Thank you. To the Fire Marshal.
Yes, for the month of January, the Building Department issued 92 permits for construction activities. Total of 67 inspections were conducted, 14 use and occupancy certificates were issued, and also responded to 15 fire incidents during the month as well as two burning complaints.
Thank you. And the Liveville Fire Company?
Yes, for the month of January, the department responded to 51 alarms, 27 of which were in Euclid, 10 in Upper Euclid, five in West Pikeville, and nine in other townships. That's my.
Yeah. Move to the Euclid anyone?
Euclid anyone? Good evening, everybody.
Hello.
For the month of January, we had a total of 304 calls. Euclid, there was 108 in Euclid. The next one was West Whitland with 103.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Can I get a motion to accept the reports?
I move that we accept the reports as presented.
I'll second. I think Mamie's frozen, actually.
I'll make a motion to accept the reports as presented.
All right, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye. My internet connection is unstable.
Okay. You froze for a moment, but you're back. All right, we'll move to the business of the agenda. First up is the police discipline.
I'm going to make a motion to suspend Officer Michael Filisoff for a period of 30 days without pay, which shall take effect tomorrow, Tuesday, February 9th, 2021.
I second that.
Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion passes. Next, to the permission to advertise the 2021 road projects.
Right, so for what we're asking for this evening is for the board to authorize the advertisement of the 2021 road projects. We got a little behind because of COVID-19 last year, and what we're trying to do is get this program back on track. Currently, the roads listed as part of the 2021 road projects include Astor Place, Beach Street, Maple Street, Oak Street, Nicholson Drive, Palace Drive, Tremont Drive, Basset Drive, Patrick Henry Drive, as well as Williamsburg Boulevard from Norwood to Burdette. I do just want to note that both Beach and Maple Street do have potential sewer and stormwater projects, which is why we do list Williamsburg, and we have reserved the right in the bid documents to move these streets around or remove them as needed.
And this is just for permission to advertise the bid, right?
That is correct.
All right, can I get a motion?
Yeah, I move to grant permission to advertise for the 2021 road projects bid.
I second that.
Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. And then permission to advertise the Verizon franchise ordinance.
Right, so this actually is something that we do on an agreement basis with Verizon. If you recall back to last year's budget presentation, one of the things that we discussed was cable franchise fees and the revenues that the township does receive based off of a percentage of the gross revenue in the township. One of the issues with this has been how, I want to say it's 24% over the last four years of people moving to streaming services, like, you know, all our favorites, I won't list them, but that is a trend that we do foresee continuing. And we did work with a consortium of Chester County townships in this process with the Cohen Law Group, which is, this is one of their specialties, and we were able to get the same percentage of gross income at 5%. For this agreement, however, as previous agreements have been with, for 10 years with additional extensions, this year Verizon is only agreeing to a five-year agreement, which we do understand is as far as they're going out pretty much everywhere these days. So basically, this will need to be approved via ordinance, and what we're asking for today is permission to advertise that.
I'll make a motion to grant that we advertise the Verizon franchise ordinance.
I second that.
Is there any discussion or questions? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion passes. Moving to the Shimonah Creek Disc Golf Course proposal.
All right, so basically, and I do believe that Brian Brower is in.
Yes, I'm here, Scott.
There you go. Brian, what I have for this evening is the PowerPoint presentation that you had given the Park and Recs Committee, and what I'd like to do is pull up the map of the courses proposed. So I just asked, bear with me for one second as I make that transition there. Sorry, technology. Let's see.
While Scott's pulling that up, have the supervisors already seen this, Scott?
Yes, we have shared this with the supervisors.
I believe you told me that, I just wanted to make sure.
Can everybody see that?
Yes, on screen.
Okay. Brian, do you want to just maybe quickly go through the proposal and how we got to this point?
Sure, super high level. So, hi, everyone, I'm Brian. I've been a Euclid Township resident in the past. My family just moved back about six months ago. I grew up playing soccer and Little League ball at this park, and over the last five years became interested in what's become a very, a growing in popularity sport of disc golf. There's a new park over at Kerr in Downingtown that went in a couple of years ago. And so, you know, I've really enjoyed playing the sport. I have five and six-year-old children, and they can throw, but even Kerr Park is a little bit far, so I thought, I wonder if Shimonah has space for a couple holes for an adult kind of a chip and putt practice, or really for youth as a sort of another feature. And so, I went to the park with a number of other players, looked at the perimeter, realized there's actually a good amount of space there. And then consultation with Jeff, the parks supervisor, drafted the layout that you see in front of you as a way to put in a nine-hole disc golf course. And the sort of theme of the course is, how do you not mess with anything that Lya is doing? So you see there's no use of the ball field and where the soccer area has typically been in the past. How do you not put foot traffic past the playground so that kids don't have to worry about, you know, teenagers or adults walking past with their three- and four-year-old on the playground? And how do you really also not disrupt any use of the pavilion, which is another very popular activity? I mean, it also doesn't really mess with the volleyball court or the basketball court, but the priorities were, how do you maintain existing park use, create a new feature, and also not mess with the Euclid Trail, which is like the most popular feature in the township these days with the pandemic? So, that's the high level. I don't know, we have all but one of the holes funded via township resident donations, so don't need to use any township funding. Anything else you want me to cover, Scott? That's, I'm trying to be brief.
No, I think that's great. And honestly, you know, Brian, you hit it on the head with COVID-19. This is also another outdoor activity that we could offer residents, both young and old. So, it's very exciting. We have talked extensively with our Parks Department, and I know, Brian, you have as well. So, and they're comfortable with, you know, Brian is going to be donating the baskets, or they've been, they're going to be donated by other residents, and our Parks Department will be installing them as well as working on the tees for these, for these tees, for this course. So, I did want to point out, and Katie, you can jump in here too, the Parks Department did give a tentative approval for this. I know that they wanted to walk the course, and I know, Brian, you said you were going to get that arranged very quickly. But what we would like to do is work, get the board to make a motion this evening for us to work with a solicitor just to come up with some form of accepting this donation. So, I guess that's the motion that we would ask this evening, keeping in mind that obviously Brian still will be walking the course with the Park and Rec Committee if it ever stops snowing.
Right, so Scott, the only thing I'd add to the motion is, and I'm not versing all this stuff, depending on what the solicitor says, the two ways that I've seen this work successfully with townships is a donation document like you described, or a zero-cost 10- or 20-year lease. With, if the park wants to get rid of them, then the so-and-so individuals or company is responsible for removal and disposal of the baskets. So I don't know if you want to motion to a donation and/or lease letter to give the solicitor both options so he don't have to come back to the table. That's the last thing I would have said.
Absolutely. Mark, do you have any issues with that?
I think that makes sense to give us the options, and I think there, I mean, I understood what you were authorizing was just a general authorization to come up with some sort of agreement anyway that, in the form of which we would work through.
Great.
So can I just ask a couple of questions about the layout, just for my curiosity? Fire away. Yeah, so I was looking at the hole one, I just wanted to confirm, I've been on that area a lot, and I think I understand the layout, but is, are you able to see foot traffic going into one from both directions before you throw? Yes, so on the picture, it makes it look like the tee is at the road. It's actually quite in a bit. And you can see down the path to the right, but the tee is positioned purposefully at the tree, so discs basically can't go to the path on the right. The path, it's hard to tell with this map. The path is actually, there's a few more trees between that hole and the path, if I remember. Oh, absolutely, yeah. There's a whole edge of trees, the way we're looking at it, the right side of the path, there's actually four or five barrier trees there, but the basket is, as we're looking at it here, to the right. So there's no realistic way anybody would throw anywhere near the path on hole one. I played with my wife, so I'm not sure about that, but I'll. Actually, I'm the one who's terrible at it, so. But, all right, so that helps me, that, okay. Sure, so, and Bill, I don't know if I mentioned this, we went and played this with people who have no control purposefully, and some players who have power, just to see, where does a disc land if someone does something foolish, whether it's intentional or unintentional? So anything, I mean, you know, a kid can spin around and throw it backwards, you can always have that sort of stuff happen. But in terms of the design, sort of the 95% was trying to get nowhere near where people are normally going to be, or 100% visibility. So I love that you asked the visibility question, so yes, it's very, very visible. Okay. That was really my one question. Okay. Any other questions on the board? I want to make a motion, and then we have a discussion from public. Do I get a motion to authorize a solicitor to work with an agreement on accepting the donation of the baskets set up for the disc golf?
Or a long-term lease.
Or a long-term lease, right.
So moved. I second that.
Okay, so is there any discussion?
Can I just say thanks to Mr. Brower for, you know, thinking up this great idea? I think it's an excellent addition of another recreational activity for people that live in the township and people nearby. I think more and more people are looking for things to do outside, and this is a free and fun activity for all ages, so thank you.
My pleasure, thank you.
Definitely appreciate it, Brian. Our Parks Department is genuinely intrigued and excited about this project, so.
If there's no other discussion, I'll take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. All right, thank you.
Thank you so much.
The next item is the 2021 Hankin Events.
Yes, we received a list of tentative events for 2021 for the Town Center from the Hankin Group, which do include the farmer's market, three movie nights, three concerts, Eagle View Block Party, a wellness event with a 5K, the Trick or Treat, and the Winter Fest Holiday Spectacular. They are keeping with the CDC guidelines, and we are currently working to coordinate with the fire police for all of these events. So if you guys are okay with that, and once we coordinate everything, we can approve these events if you guys are okay with that.
So this is just informing us of the events, right?
Yes, there are quite a few less than there usually are. But they're still trying to have family-friendly fun for their residents and ours.
Okay.
Understandable, but it's difficult to plan these days.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Is there any other questions from the board?
No.
Okay, all right, well then we'll move to the next item. Scott, can you change to the agenda?
Yes, sorry, clearly, Disc Golf Course here.
But the next item is the Hankin Severn Apartment Request for an Extension.
Yes, I received a letter from Brian Nagel on behalf of the applicant requesting the extension until March 9th. As you know, last time, last month, they were on the agenda for an extension request as well. They're working to revise the plan to address access onto Whitford Road from the Severn Apartments. So, once we get that revision, we'll be able to review that and bring it back to you in March.
I can get a motion to approve the request for an extension?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to grant the request for an extension for Severn Apartments until March 9th, 2021. Kim had to go, she just said.
I'll second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now, the Hankin Group's Eagle View Town Center to conditionally used decision.
Yes, on January 26th, the conditionally used decision was rendered. We did receive a letter from Allison Zarro on behalf of the applicant, accepting all of the conditions of that decision.
So we just, we just need to acknowledge, right?
Yes.
Okay, and then we'll move to the Carefree Coach Rentals Acceptance of Conditionally Used Decision.
Yes, we received an email from Alfascado, Fascaldo, who was representing the applicant. Their decision was rendered at the January 11th meeting, and they accepted all of the conditions of that decision as well.
Great. All right, then we'll move to the Sunoco. Is there any questions on either of those, or any comments that anyone wants? If not, I'll move to the Sunoco update. This is a summary of the activities for the Marineries 2 and 2X Pipeline Projects. So I'll just go through the drill sites in the township. So what they refer to as HDB Site 310, which is between Hermano West Drive to Upper Euclid, they estimate they're 52% complete for their final ream of their 20-inch pipe. Their pipe pullback has been pushed back to early April pending weather and other issues. The 16-inch pipe there was already completed. HDB Site 320, which is at Hermano West Drive to Wharton Boulevard, is complete with tree planting and restoration partially complete. HDB Site 331, which is from the Dairy Queen site along Eagleview Boulevard towards North Whitford Road, is complete, and the winter restoration is complete in that area too. The HDB Site 350, which is North Whitford Road toward to Devon Drive, both the 16 and 20-inch pipe HDB work is complete. The North Whitford Road area has completed their winter restoration, waiting for final work for the spring and better weather. And then Devon Drive restoration work is scheduled to occur when the shown road site is complete. And that site, which is HDB 360, which is from Devon Drive down to Shown Road, which is in West Whitland Township, the Sunoco is still waiting on a PA DEP approval for restart of the 20-inch pipe work. So that is all the information I have for the Sunoco tonight. Is there any questions about the Sunoco activities from ME?
Yes, I'm sorry, I'm wondering if y'all have heard of the recent developments in Middletown Township.
Can you state your names before?
Connor Young, 364 Devon Drive, Exton, Pennsylvania, 19341.
I mean, I've been following the news, but is there anything specific that you're referring to?
Yes, it's supervisors that, and from a lot of other townships, that, you know, folks are afraid of taking legal action against Sunoco for fear of lawsuits. And I just wanted to point out that Middletown Township also took that position, and they ended up getting sued by residents, by a landowner whose property is being very disruptive, very disrupted, rather. So I just wanted to bring it to your attention, and I also want to again push y'all to be in good communication with other townships, because, you know, if it feels, and people can prove, if they think they have a case, that, you know, y'all aren't taking appropriate action towards keeping the residents of the township safe. The town, the people in the township will move against the township, and I would rather the township moves against Sunoco. So I just wanted to, I just wanted to make sure that y'all were aware that, you know, there is a, I believe it's being heard in federal court litigation from a landowner in Middletown against Middletown Township. And I don't know if Sunoco is violating international fire code anywhere in Euclid, and it's probably not the case, might not be the case. I just wanted y'all to be aware of what's going on out there.
I was aware of that case. I'm not a, I defer any legal commentary since I'm not a lawyer, but I was aware of it, and that's, but thank you, yes. Is there any other?
Mark, do you want to talk about how, I mean, the township is currently?
I'm, I'm, I'm not, I mean, I'm aware of the case. I'm not really sure what point the commenter was trying to make towards the township. I think Euclid Township in particular has been extremely proactive, and we have been, as I'm sure the commenter, because he seems well-informed, knows we were involved in a number of cases, including the most recent case, which is still pending in front of the PUC, where we worked with numerous other municipalities, school districts, two counties. So, obviously, the township's been engaged, so I'm not. So obviously, the, the township's been engaged, so I'm not really sure what the point of the comment was.
My, my, my attention has been elsewhere, so I, I might have, I might have spoken out of turn there. But point, point, point was, was education. If, if y'all weren't aware of what had been happening with other townships, and, yeah. Appreciate you.
Thanks, thanks, Connor.
If there's other comments about Sunoco, we'll move to the announcements, and then we'll open for a, a public comment on any township issues, other township issues. So I'll go with the announcement, which the historical, I'll, I'll announce the upcoming meetings, which will all be held virtually Zoom, via Zoom, and you can find the links on the website prior to the meeting on the township website, that is. The Historical Commission will meet on February 11th at 7:30 PM. The Zoning Hearing Board will meet on February 17th at 7:00 PM to discuss the Audubon Land Development Core Variances and Formella's Frontyard Variance on, at 107 West Devon Drive. The Environmental Advisory Council Workshop Meeting will occur on February 18th at 6:30 PM. The Park and Recreations Committee will meet on March 1st at 7:30 PM. The Planning Commission will meet on March 3rd at 7:30 PM. And the next Board of Supervisors Meeting will be on March 8th at 7:30 PM. With that, I'll open it up to public questions and comments. In the chat, Laura has mentioned that, thank you for creating a new section on the website for pending development and proposals and plans. I appreciate the township staff's work on that. I know that was not as easy as it sounds, and I think it's a great addition for informing the public of what's going on. Is any other comments or questions? If not, we get a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Alright, I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
Thank you.